Good morning, everyone. The time is 8:39. We'll begin our city council meeting with a roll call. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines, Brandow, Brettafeld, Capriolio, Chavez, Vice President Soria, President Olivier.
Do we have Pastor Brian here? Oh, there you are. Okay. Pastor Brian Weeby from Bethany Church will provide our invocation and will do the Pledge of Allegiance immediately following the prayer. If you would all please stand.
I would say, I would guess that most leaders who bring the invocation will pray each time for wisdom for our elected officials and appointed leaders. And in the Bible's book of Proverbs, wisdom is beautifully personified as a woman, a beautiful woman, although the larger context of the Bible teaches us that true wisdom is Jesus Himself. So if we're going to pray for wisdom, we're well advised to do so from Scripture. Before I pray, allow me just to read a few verses straight from the Bible about wisdom, and Wisdom Herself speaking says this, "I, Wisdom, dwell together with prudence; I possess knowledge and discretion. To fear the Lord is to hate evil. I hate pride and arrogance, evil behavior and perverse speech. Counsel and sound judgment are mine," says Wisdom. "I have insight; I have power. By me kings reign and rulers issue decrees that are just; by me princes govern and nobles, all who rule on earth. I love those who love me, and those who seek me find me. With me are riches and honor, enduring wealth and prosperity." Proverbs, Chapter 8, verses 12 to 18. Let us pray. Almighty God, in this hour, I thank you that you alone are the true giver of wisdom, insight, and understanding. I ask you today, Lord God, for an abundance of wisdom for these who lead us in our city, a city rich in resources, diverse in peoples, and so beautiful in your creation. I ask for your wisdom that they may lead with integrity, humility, justice, and courage, not for their own gain or glory, but for the good of all people. I ask today, Heavenly Father, for your wisdom for these leaders to know how to lead in ways that protect the people of this city in a time when so many cities in our nation are besieged with conflict, division, and terror. Protect us, I pray, from those who seek to tear us apart with violence and hatred. Lord, may an abundance of your wisdom produce the fruit of unity, prosperity, and honor for the city of Fresno to be made known throughout our great nation. We bring these requests today with thankfulness for your many blessings, and we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, the only Savior. Amen.
All right. At this time, I wish to take the agenda, I want to do the ceremonial presentations before the agenda because I have a couple of questions for our city attorney, so let's go ahead and flip-flop those. Presentation of the SPCA Pet of the Month, City Councilmember Baines.
Which will be done by Councilmember Brandow.
Right. And it's been outsourced to Councilmember Brandow. Take it away. How did I know that was going to happen? I just had a feeling.
Well, it was outsourced, but it was because I requested it. When I saw this little doggy, I wanted to be standing out here with this doggy. What's this doggy's name?
So this is Bailey. He's two months old, and he's available for adoption. So he's really cute, but he could be yours if you're interested, so.
Can I hold Bailey? That's what I really wanted to do. Now, look at this little dog right here. Wouldn't this make a great pet for a young kid to grow up with a nice doggy like this? What's that? I don't think Bailey would survive my cat, but, you know, we have great partners at the SPCA. I work with them in Pinedale and throughout District 2, and they do a lot of great things, getting our community up to speed on the importance of spaying and neutering and chipping and all the great things that go with pet ownership. So they're great partners for the city of Fresno, and we appreciate it. And you help us with strays on our streets, but you also help us find homes for wonderful pets like Bailey. So if you'd like to say anything.
Yes, thank you. It's National Pet Awareness Month this November, so we just want to remind people what great companions, right, dogs and all pets can be in general. They can help with depression, anxiety, and things like that. So if you guys are interested, you guys can check out our pets on our website. You can visit us at the shelter. We basically never close. We're open seven days of the week, from 10 to 5. And then, of course, if you have a pet and maybe you're not able to take another one, you can obtain really low-cost services such as microchipping, spray-neuter, you can get your dog license, all those kinds of services that our pets need. We do grooming and all of that, so that would be wonderful. You guys can take advantage of all those services. And again, so this is Bailey. He was in foster care, that's why he's such a good little boy, and he's not like being a, well, he's a little rambunctious, but he's not very loud, but he's a good boy. So thank you, guys, for your time. We appreciate that you guys have us every month.
And you know, I think, I think I've found a home for Bailey. The mayor is sitting right here. Right. Well, thank you so much for joining us this month.
Thank you. Our next ceremonial presentation is the proclamation of Ambassador Philip V. Sanchez Day, and that's being given by City Councilmember Brandow, Vice President Soria, and Mayor Lee Brand. Please come forward.
The beard got groomed by the dog. We're here today with my co-sponsors, Councilman Brandow and Soria, to honor Philip Sanchez. And I go back a long enough to know when he was in his prime. He was a local boy, grew in 1929, born in Pinedale. He rose to the ranks, I think with the CEO of Fresno Unified. Then-Governor Ronald Rengat appointed him as a chancellor on the State Center Board. And he went on to get his degree, was successful, and became a diplomat. He was appointed as ambassador to Honduras. So a local boy who rose all the way to the world stage. I'm very proud here today to be part of the ceremony and offer my condolences to the family.
Good morning. I similarly want to offer my condolences, but also just want to share really the life of this man that came from very humble beginnings. It reminds me of my life in terms of coming from a farmworker immigrant community and being able to work hard and attain that American dream, and I think that he embodies that. I know that it's reflected on his family, and so we're very proud to be able to honor his life and his memory and the contributions that not only did he make to our local community, but I know that he made to this great nation that we live in. He was, I think, the first highest-ranking Hispanic appointed by President Richard Nixon, so very, very impressive and just grateful to have the opportunity to honor this great man.
And being the representative of Pinedale, I'd let everybody know that Philip Sanchez is like a hero in that neck of the woods and throughout North Fresno. But in reality, getting to know Mr. Sanchez and all of the great things that he's accomplished in his life, he's really a Fresno hero. And he's a Valley hero, and really a hero for the state of California. And I was happy to finally get to know him, becoming a councilman, and all the great things that he's accomplished in his life, and standing up for our community and always being a strong voice and a leader for the citizens of our city. So we do appreciate him. We know that you've suffered a great loss, and so has the community, and we wanted to recognize him. So I think we'll have the clerk read the proclamation at this point, and we'll present this to you.
Whereas Philip V. Sanchez was born on July 28, 1929, in Pinedale, California, as the son of farmworkers in Fresno County, and started working with his parents picking cotton at the age of six. And whereas Philip V. Sanchez graduated from Clovis High, Kalinga College, as well as a two-time graduate from Fresno State University with a master's degree in political science. And whereas Philip V. Sanchez entered the Army National Guard in college, serving for more than 40 years, becoming the first ever enlistee to rise to the rank of private to Colonel. And whereas Philip V. Sanchez was an important leader in education, first serving as chief administrative officer and board member of Clovis's Unified School District. He was later appointed by Governor Ronald W. Raven to serve on the California Community Colleges Board of Governors and the California State University and Colleges Board of Trustees. And whereas Philip V. Sanchez was appointed as Assistant Director to the Office of Economic Opportunity by President Richard Nixon in 1971, then as a Nixon ambassador to Honduras in 1973, becoming one of the first Spanish-speaking U.S. ambassadors to a Latin American nation. In 1975, he was transferred to the American Embassy in Colombia under President Gerald Ford, returning to the United States in 1977. And whereas Ambassador Philip V. Sanchez Public Charter School was founded in 2011 in honor of his incredible dedication and contributions to education of those underserved in the Central Valley. And whereas Philip V. Sanchez passed away on October 16, 2017, and is survived by his two sisters and six children. And whereas the city of Fresno wishes to recognize Philip V. Sanchez and his legacy of service to his community and nation, now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand, and Fresno City Council members do hereby declare November 2, 2017, as Ambassador Philip V. Sanchez Day in the city of Fresno.
They stole the microphone from a politician. Would you like to speak?
Mayor, respected council, and all of you here, thank you very much for this great honor. My father was very proud to be for this community. He was very proud to serve this community. And we regret his passing very, very much. We thank you very much for taking the time to give this honor to him. On behalf of my family, we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Let's give him a big hand.
Our next proclamation will be proclamations of Craig, Jerry, and Jimmy Turner Day. This will also be presented by City Councilmember Brandow and City Councilmember Brettafeld.
Well, this is a great opportunity for us in the city council to recognize two heroes in our community who did extraordinary things as citizens in our community. Want to introduce Jimmy Turner and Craig Jerry. I will mention what Mr. Turner did, and then Councilmember Brandow can address what Mr. Jerry did, as well as Captain Farmer, if you want to say a few words, too. Mr. Turner, on June 19, 2017, entered an AutoZone store, and I'm just going to briefly do an overview. Went in the store, came out, heard some shots. He had left his two sons in the car, just went in and heard some shots, came out and saw that there was some shooting going on. And actually is a CCW holder and grabbed his weapon and was able to hold these people until the police arrived to prevent some serious violence and maybe people losing their lives. That's quite an extraordinary act, and we want to honor your courage and bravery in preventing people from potentially getting hurt. And, you know, as somebody who's a strong proponent of CCWs, this is an instance where somebody could have prevented you, prevented some further danger and people getting hurt. Unfortunately, as we know, police officers can't be everywhere, and sometimes they can't be right there as we would like them to be, and so sometimes we have to protect ourselves. And Mr. Turner is an example of that, and so want to honor that and your courage. Would you like to say a few words, or Captain Farmer, would you want to speak first? Whoever.
Well, thank you. You know, on behalf of Chief Dyer and the entire Fresno Police Department, both what Mr. Turner and Mr. Jerry, that's okay, went above and beyond the call of duty when they intervened during a gun battle and then during a robbery at Starbucks where Mr. Jerry was actually injured in a knife attack. And many times, first responders were expected to take certain risks and put our lives in jeopardy. But when a citizen does it, it makes it that much more special because it shows that you didn't have to get involved, but you decided to anyway. And so you showed a lot of courage, both of you, and you're heroes. And we respect what you did. You didn't have to, and for that, we're grateful because you care about your community. You care about making Fresno a safer place. And I hope, especially with the Starbucks incident, that you don't have to pay for another cup of coffee for a long time. And just so both of you know, we're hiring. You know, we're always looking for Fresno police officers, so thank you for what you do.
And let me apologize, this is Chief Farmer, not Captain Farmer. Yeah. And we'd also like to recognize Craig this morning at a Starbucks in northwest Fresno off of Herndon and Golden State. A real foreboding character came into Starbucks, and I read, you know, your comments. There was a moment where you thought, man, something's going bad here. I've got to get out of here. But in reality, you didn't do that. You said, no, I can't get out. I've got to do something about this. So, you know, we had an incident in New York City just a couple days ago, and tragic things like this are happening across our nation. And as Councilman Brettafeld mentioned, the police can't be everywhere at every moment. So we need strong citizens who are sacrificial and willing to think about the greater good of our community. And Jerry, I think you did that at that Starbucks that day. And I actually want to just ask you to take a minute or two and to talk to us about what went through your head and what you faced at that Starbucks.
Well, I was, first off, I want to thank you. Thank you for the invitation to be here. Thank the city council members. And I'll tell you, I've always respected law enforcement. I have a whole new experience after being in this situation. But just real briefly, I did stop at the Starbucks on the way home. We'd been out of town and at a meeting, and I was casual at the meeting, but thought I could take a moment to get some coffee and just shoot a couple of emails. And I was sitting with this other female right next to me, and we were the only two people in the store, and there was a commotion, and I saw somebody coming in. And I could tell that, I could tell that it wasn't right, and then I looked up again. I could see he had a mask on, and then I looked over and realized that he was, you know, he was robbing the store, and he was waving his gun at the female barista. And he's right, the first thing I thought was, oh, my God, this is going down. I got to get the heck out of here. And the door was right next to me, and I folded up my iPad, and I went this way, and I ended up standing in front of a chair. And I said, well, okay, I'm not leaving. What am I going to do? I got to do something. And, you know, the only thing I had available was the chair, and that's when I grabbed it, and I just, you know, my first intent was to hopefully knock him down, disarm him. And, you know, I was making the joke now, you better have a backup plan, because that didn't work. And then we just, then we ended up getting into a pretty traumatic fight, and that's when everything else happened. But, you know, after he left and escaped, the police were right there, and I had the best care ever at the hospital. And Officer Ryan Stockton, he was with me for six hours in the trauma center. And again, to everybody, the law enforcement, everybody for taking care of me and, you know, taking care of the situation, and then to Chief Jerry Dyer for his support throughout this situation. So it's not done yet. They're going to trial, and, you know, at this point, I'll just, I'll look forward to being yesterday's news. Thank you all.
And I saw that swing with the chair. That was incredible. And you can see it on video. Jimmy Turner, I'd like you to say a few words.
Well, first, I'd like to appreciate the police department for sure. I mean, I don't really want to talk about what happened as much as I want to say how responsive you guys were. You know, normally, when you go to a situation like that and you have your gun drawn, you know, you worry about the response of the police department. Well, when they got there, one of the gentlemen that first arrived on the scene didn't treat me like a criminal. He saw what I was. He had already had some information and went around me, took care of what else was going on. Three or four officers that showed up at that time really made me feel like I was part of, you know, a team at the time, and it just really made me feel really wonderful that I didn't get, you know, put down. You know, that's one thing you worry about. You know, you go in and you pull your gun, and you think, well, maybe you're the criminal, and they didn't treat me like that. It was nice, really amazing. And, man, you guys have all just been amazing. I mean, the whole response of everybody that day was just incredible. So I just wanted to say I appreciate the Fresno Police Department. I really respect you guys.
Well, and we all do respect our police department because they are our first line of defense, and we're always grateful to you and grateful to these citizens who took it upon themselves to intercede and help make us all safer because unfortunately, we can't have a police officer on every street corner, and they're not there immediately. They're there quickly, but sometimes we need that intervention from our citizens, and you represent that. So, City Clerk, would you please read the proclamations? Thank you.
Whereas on Monday, June 19, at 11:48 a.m., Jimmy Turner and his two children, that are 11 and 12 years old, went to AutoZone at Fig Garden Drive in Bullard. Jimmy's children stayed in the car while he went into the store. And whereas Mr. Turner walked into the store, he heard some men in a maroon car in the street yelling at someone in the parking lot. And whereas, just as Mr. Turner was about to walk out of the store, he heard gunfire and saw the same maroon vehicle parked behind his car where his children were still inside. The four occupants of the maroon car were exchanging gunfire with a man in the parking lot. Whereas Jimmy bravely made his way to his vehicle where he was able to retrieve his licensed concealed weapon. After retrieving the gun, he instructed his children to lie on the floor. On the other side of Jimmy's vehicle lay two men suffering from gunshot wounds. The other two men were trying to drag one of the wounded men into the car when Jimmy ordered the men to lie on the ground. Jimmy held all the men at gunpoint for arriving police. And whereas Mr. Turner's first priority was to protect his children, the men Jimmy subdued were still armed, and this violent act could have continued with more casualties had he not bravely stepped forward to take immediate action. Therefore, be it resolved that on this day, the mayor and council members of the city of Fresno wish to show their pride and gratitude to Mr. Jimmy Turner for his bravery and being a heroic citizen by declaring today, November 2, 2017, to be Jimmy Turner Day in the city of Fresno. Whereas on Thursday, July 20, at 5:30, at the Starbucks on Herndon and Golden State, changed Mr. Greg Jerry's life forever. A man walked in wearing a transformer mask, holding a black gun, and commanding the barista to put the money in the bag. And whereas the suspect produced a knife that he began waving in the air at the barista. She opened the register preparing to give him the money when the robbery was interrupted by a customer, Greg Jerry, who was doing some work on his tablet in the Starbucks when he saw the suspect approach the counter wearing a mask, holding a handgun, and a bag. And whereas Mr. Jerry found himself needing to get out of there, but he couldn't do that to the barista or the others in the store, so instead, he picked up a chair and swung it at the robber from behind. The suspect responded by fighting, and at some point during the struggle, Mr. Jerry was stabbed in the neck, and when he saw the blood, he knew that this fight, this was a fight for his life as they wrestled on the floor. And whereas the suspect was struggling to hold on to the knife, and Craig was able to grab it. Continuing the fight for his life, he began to defend himself and stop the aggression. The suspect got to his feet and ran from the Starbucks and fled the area. He was found several miles away by citizens who found him washing the blood off of himself in a canal at Fruit and Ashland. The suspect told the citizens that he was a victim of a robbery and not to bother to call the police. And whereas facts of the case became known, the robbery was premeditated, and the Starbucks was chosen as a target because there was no one inside. Therefore, be it resolved that on this day, mayor and council members of the city of Fresno wish to show their pride and gratitude to Mr. Craig Jerry for his bravery and being a heroic citizen by declaring today, November 2, 2017, to be Craig Jerry Day in the city of Fresno.
Our next item will be welcome certificates for the three exchange students from Chateauroux, France. Member Soria.
I am very proud to be able to present these young women a certificate of recognition on behalf of the city of Fresno. For those of you that don't know, I was appointed as the ambassador for the Chateauroux-Sisters-City relationship. We established this two years ago. Very proud that the city of Fresno has formed this relationship with Chateauroux. We actually will have visitors along with our students this coming week. But I did have the opportunity to actually travel abroad and meet with a number of folks, electeds, community leaders, and educators in Chateauroux. So I am very proud to be able to, this morning, welcome these young women. They've been here for about two and a half weeks. They will be probably departing very shortly, right? Your guys' stay is for three weeks. And so we're just very proud and want to welcome them to the city of Fresno, thank them for coming and exploring, learning about the American culture, and coming and forming relationships with our Fresno students here in the city of Fresno. And I believe you guys are at Clovis North, Clovis North. So we do have three students, and please correct me because I may say your name wrong, Diem, yeah, Diem, and Adele, Adele, and then Remain, Remain. So we want to welcome these three young women. We do have special certificates of recognition. So, Remain. So I wanted to give you guys an opportunity, if you guys could maybe share a little bit of something of your experience here as you've traveled abroad, if it's your first time. And if not, just share about what you guys have been doing over the two and a half weeks.
So, we went to San Francisco and LA during one weekend. We went, we were in the Universal Studios, and we, I went to Yosemite. We had discovered your culture and your food and...
Did you like the food?
Yes. French food is very good, so.
We went to school.
How did you like going to school? Very different? Awesome. Well, have you guys enjoyed your time here?
Yes.
Your host family? And if I want to invite, you're one of the host families? If you want to come here and just kind of share a little bit of why this is important and, you know, how long?
So my family and I were fortunate enough to send daughter Abigail to France this last summer. She stayed in Chateauroux with these lovely ladies, and she got to experience a lot of the French culture, and it's just an honor to be able to repay the favor and to accept these families here into Fresno. I remember as a young boy growing up in Fresno, my sister got to participate in foreign exchange student program, and, you know, I'm just fortunate enough to be able to help provide that experience for my daughter and for these girls. If you have young students, I would highly recommend, it's life-changing. It opens up their eyes to the entire world and lets them know that, you know, we're all not that different, and we've all got things that we're passionate about in life. And when you can share between communities, we can all get along a little bit better. And, you know what? I think these girls have had a really good time. I think these girls have had a really good time. I'm excited to have had them and they're all welcome back anytime.
Thank you so much. And again, just the importance of not only the cultural exchange, the educational exposure that they get, and also tourism, because I hope that now they will be incentivized to come back and visit the great things that exist, not only here in the city of Fresno, but throughout our state and throughout our nation. So we know that these types of relationships are key for tourism, cultural, and educational exchanges. Thank you.
Next proclamation is also from Vice President Soria for a proclamation of National Runaway Prevention Month.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call up Joe Martinez, the EOC Outreach Manager. Misty Gaddy Blanco, is she here? And then I know that we have a few youth, Sonia, Olga, and Erin, if you guys want to join me up here.
Hey. Good morning. How are you? Good morning. Thank you for joining us this morning. Just proud to be able to join you, Joe. I know the great work that you do with our community here in the city of Fresno through Fresno EOC and the young people and your passion for it. And so today, we are recognizing National Runaway Prevention Month. We know that this is an issue that plagues our youth and we also know that while it's a big issue here in our community, we have great organizations and great people like Misty and Joe that are really doing the hard work to prevent these things from happening and when they do happen, that there are resources available so that our young people can get back to some type of normalcy. So I want to thank you guys for the work that you guys are doing. I know that every year we, we come and try to do some just education about the issue, about the need to make sure that we prevent the runaways and that we showcase what some of the services that are provided here in our local community. So I'll just let you share a couple of the things that you guys are doing to do some prevention and then also the great resource that we do have here because we do have a shelter in our community to be able to house those young people that are in sometimes in a crisis.
Again, Councilmember Soria, City Councilmembers, thank you so much. On behalf of the Fresno EOC, our CEO, Brian Angus, our Sanctuary Director, Michelle Tuntunjian, who could not be here today, and of course, the awesome staff, I'm fortunate to work with Misty Gaddy Blanco, who is our Housing Manager. Crystal Streets, who is in our audience, is our Shelter, Street Shelter Outreach, pardon me, our Sanctuary Youth Shelter and Transitional Shelter Manager. To my left, we have Cesar Casamayor, who is an outreach worker with the Sanctuary Outreach to the Streets Program. And we have two very courageous young ladies who are part of our new Transitional Shelter and Drop-In Center. So thank you so much. We do want to let our public know that November is National Runaway Prevention Month. This is our opportunity to raise awareness on the issues confronting our runaway and our homeless youth population. Here in the city of Fresno, 35 youth are reported missing every month, according to the Fresno Police Department. We have nearly 1,500 homeless children that attend school every day in Fresno Unified School District. There are nearly 2,000 children that are part of the child welfare system and there are 5,000 students enrolled in Fresno County Schools. And these are the reasons why our program exists. We're here to help youth and families that are in need of help and safety and we're all about providing a safe place for our young people. Councilmember, you're right. We do provide shelter. We're on the streets. We're working with our young people as parents. We are combating human trafficking here in the city of Fresno and providing other critical services for our youth. I'm happy to tell you, and thank you to the, to the city of Fresno for your support, that we have opened a new transitional shelter as well as a drop-in center for homeless youth 18 to 24. We're actually located just a couple of blocks away from City Hall. We can actually see you from, from our transitional shelter. So I have an invitation and on November the 16th, from 11 a.m. to 1 p.m., we are hosting a tour and we are inviting you, our council members and our city and the public to please come and visit us and find out more about our program and how you can support the youth here in Fresno. So again, on behalf of our entire agency, thank you for your support and thank you for this awesome proclamation.
Do you want to share anything? Are you sure? Yeah? Any, Cesar or any of the young ladies, did you guys want to share anything about maybe the resources that are out there and your experience with the resources?
Well, I'm just happy that we do have resources. It's kind of hard being a young person and being by yourself, having no one to go to and, you know, here for me, it was very hard just to find a safe place for me to be at. I'm currently pregnant, so I was on the verge of crying and I was very scared and the Transitional Youth Shelter that we have that just opened up was like a miracle for me. Like, I'm there during the drop-in hours and I participate in activities they have. They do have where we could take showers, do our laundry, get something to eat, and then at nighttime, they give us a safe place to lay our heads, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Very powerful testimony about the great work that you guys are doing and really the impact. These are the real people that, these types of programs that Fresno EOC has, that the city of Fresno supports, and that I'm very proud to be able to support the work that you guys do so that more young women and young men that, you know, are in crisis have an opportunity to have a safe place here in the city of Fresno. So Clerk, for, for the record, if you could read the proclamation.
Whereas November is National Runaway Prevention Month and in partnership with National Runaway Safe Line, National Network for Youth, and Fresno EOC Sanctuary and Youth Services is committed to protecting our nation's most valuable asset, our youth, and ending youth homelessness by 2020. And whereas there were 11,904 crisis connections made from California to the National's Runaway Safe Line in 2016, for Fresno, there were 766 crisis connection made by youth who were provided with help and safety. And whereas Fresno EOC Sanctuary and Youth Services provides a continuum of care to assist runaway displaced and homeless youth with successful transition from adolescence to adulthood by operating an emergency and transitional shelter for youth in crisis, providing a drop-in center for homelessness, for homeless and runaway youth, and maintaining a 270 safe place sites, including more than 100 Fresno Unified School District schools, campuses, to facilitate youth access to shelter and services. And whereas in California, nearly 300,000 youths up to age 18 experienced homelessness and law enforcement in the city of Fresno reports about 35 missing persons or runaway cases per month. There are 1,476 children in Fresno Unified School District and over 5,000 children in the Fresno County Schools who are homeless. And whereas if all of us work together, we can prevent the situations that compel youth to run away from home by teaching youth and their families awareness, stress management, communication skills, and providing resources. And whereas the city of Fresno supports the efforts of the Fresno EOC Sanctuary and Youth Services in working diligently to increase public awareness about, advocate on behalf of, and provide positive and safe alternatives to runaway and homeless youth and their family. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council members of the city of Fresno, do hereby proclaim November 2017 as National Runaway Prevention Month in the city of Fresno.
Okay, our next item is going to be the approval of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are. Item 1F, File ID 171451, which is a resolution for the 539th Amendment to the Master Fee Schedule, adjusting various fees. There's a slight problem with the Master Fee Schedule. The language on page three on Exhibit A under landing fee needs to read 10,000 pounds or less, not 1,000 pounds. Under I, Item 1H, which is File ID 1473, a bill number 59 granting a non-exclusive roll-off franchise collection that is being removed from the agenda per staff. Item 1I, File ID 171474, regarding DDA, DDNA with Darlene Ingredient Inc. Corporation. I did it. Okay. Okay. It's not subject to the mayor's veto, which is indicated on the agenda. And also, Item 4A is being removed from the agenda.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers have any changes that they wish to make to the agenda?
Council President, I'd like to remove the 10 a.m. item and continue it till the first meeting in December, 10 a.m.
So Councilman Baines, and we'd spoke about this in, this morning, so, so you feel confident that we will be able to come back by December? You'll have the time that you need to...
Yeah, I want to keep the, the same time as 10 a.m. I don't, Clerk, Madam Clerk, can you tell me what the first meeting in December is, what the date of that is? And I'll just call the date out here.
It's December 7th.
December 7th. So we'll bring it back in December 7th at 10 a.m. And that is for, from my perspective, that's a certainty unless some other councilmember has a, has a different idea, but I plan for us to hear the item on that day for sure.
Okay, thank you.
President?
Yes.
Can I read an additional information into Item 1F?
Please.
Under the landing fee, the minimum per landing needs to read 10,000 pounds or less, not 1,000 pounds.
That's, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I see, and I know that I have received a, a number of phone calls on this item and then I see Ms. Austin out there. I have a yellow card from you. I, I see the, the direction that this is going, that it's going to be removed for, we'll get you back on December 7th. Do you want to speak or you, are you?
Casey Austin, 614 East Weldon, Fresno, California. I understand Councilman Baines is, it's at his discretion, it's his district. I just ask that we not prolong it any longer than the first meeting. We've gone on this for about a year and a half now and we've gone through every step and with due diligence and have reached this point and so we feel confident and we'd like to just air out whatever issues the councilman has and not take it any further than December 7th. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, then that item is removed. If anyone else has any changes to the agenda? Okay, screen's clear. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any opposition to this item? Okay, seeing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. Okay, moving now to the approval of minutes. Approving the minutes of October 26th, 2017. Do any councilmembers have any changes they'd like to make to the minutes? Okay, there are no changes to the minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve. I remember Capriolio, I will second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously. We move now to councilmember reports and comments. I think the computer is trashed because it says someone is punched up who is not here and then I have two other boxes but no names on them. So we'll just do it by show of hands. Who wishes to make a council comment? Member Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. Saturday at the Fresno Discovery Center, we unveiled two new dinosaur replicas. This is part of the Fresno area's first annual free museum day across the city as part of a project of the Greater Fresno Alliance of Museums and Educational Sites. And this is designed to bring the area's cultural and history heritage, excuse me, historical heritage to a wider audience. So when you think of a gift of two dinosaurs to the Discovery Center, imagine in your mind what it might look like. So I'm going to show you right now what the reality of it is. And it was incredible, incredible gift from Susan Morrison. We can't thank her enough. That's the entrance to the Discovery Center. Here we go. That's an all-metal T-Rex. And there are the two dinosaurs. We'll get a close-up in a minute and you can see the, the magnitude of them. And thank God they weren't hungry that day. I was underneath that one's mouth and I thought, oh my God, I could be an appetizer here. And the lower one is a Triceratops that everyone is familiar with, but the kids went crazy over that. We had a lot of adults and kids there. And the lady to my left is the one who generously gave us those two dinosaurs and it's an amazing thing at the, at the Discovery Center. So I want to invite everybody to come down there and check it out because it's incredible. The whole thing's been upgraded year by year. Gary Pig to the, to my farthest left is the president and they're working so hard out there. And it continues to grow. I think we had one, is there another picture where I almost, yeah, I almost, it was close. It was close, right? I barely got away. I didn't know they were animated, but no, they're not. But it was a great day, a lot of fun, and so I want to invite you all to come out to the Discovery Center and, and see these great exhibits. Also a special thanks to Jeb and Anna McMurray. They donated a playset. When I say playset, this isn't a swing set or something like that. This is like the original totlot. They generously donated that to the Discovery Center so the little kids can have something to do as well. So you ought to come out there and see what we're doing. My favorite, the Gemini Space Capsule has been redone and it's fun to go inside as well. So it was a great day for the Discovery Center. Saturday, or Sunday, rather, we had the Sierra Madre Picnic. I appreciate everyone's hard work and all the volunteers that helped us. The kids there had a great time. They loved to interact with our first responders. We had the fire department, Fresno Police Department with motorcycles, the Fresno Police Department with their lights and sirens going occasionally. And so thanks to the Fresno Fire Department, Fresno PD, the mosque, Fresno State ASI, and the students, Dr. Frank Lamas, and again, Fresno State University Police Department. Also at Vinland School, we celebrated National Red Ribbon Week. And so it was an opportunity for us to pass out certificates from the city of Fresno to all the students and they were so respectful. They actually thought our mayor was the president and we had, we had to clarify that. But it was a great day for all the kids. And yesterday, ASI recognized the Fresno Police Department and for their help at the university. And thanks to Captain Bridges, Sergeant Langdon, Lieutenant Brogdon for being present and their, Member Soria just saw the, saw the slide. Anyway, they worked so hard and they helped develop this satellite station at Sixth and Shaw. Again, Steve Brandow, I know you're going to be there with me, November 4th, that's this Saturday, Fresno State versus BYU Cougars. Go Dogs. Need to get back in our groove, don't we? And congratulations to the Houston Astros. As all of you know, that's our AAA affiliate here in the city of Fresno. So two years ago, we won the AAA National Championship and this year, the Astros did it for the entire country. So thank you very much, Council President.
What kind of dinosaur is that standing in front of the Triceratops?
That's, that's a very rare species and...
It's a Paul Caprioliosaurus.
You're right. That was a lot of fun.
Capriolopteryx.
There's only one left.
Yeah. I have punched up Marlene Murphy, two blank squares, John Hudson, and Luis Chavez. So I don't know where these people, I don't know how these people got on here. So our next speaker will be, go ahead, Member Brandow.
I have to be very careful about this because I have Dodgers fans in the family, very strong Dodger fans, but I also would like to congratulation, congratulate the Houston Astros. That was a wonderful, that was a, are we ringing bells today? That was a wonderful World Series and, but I... That was a wonderful World Series, and, but I would also like, I'm going to wait. I can wait. I've got time. But I also wanted to add that it's very interesting that World Series champions are coming through California's AAA program, or Fresno's AAA program, right? And Councilman Baines, we were talking about that on the way into the building today, so I think there's something there. Well, I think you said it's the Fresno, it's the magic that we have in our city that's sending these guys on to great fame, so I do congratulate them.
Couple of comments. So, this past week, my office had a booth at the Annual Resources for Independence Central Valley Resource Fair. Great event, great turnout, reaching out to the community to let them know what types of services are available. I also did have the opportunity to attend both the Fresno Unified and Central Unified State of the Education events. Great event, well-attended, great opportunity to continue partnership with our neighboring school districts. And I just wanted to make an announcement for residents of District One and just for folks in the city of Fresno. As many of you all know, our Fresno FAX department or division is going through a restructure, and they're doing a series of workshops. There is an upcoming workshop in my district at Fresno City College this Saturday at 11:00 AM. We're inviting students, faculty, staff, residents, neighbors to come out, give us input. We want to know what are, what are the things that you want to see, how can we improve the system so that we are better serving our community? So, we're encouraging folks to come out, and I know that they're, this is just one of many that are happening throughout the entire city, but I did want to highlight this one because it's coming up on Saturday at 11:00 AM.
The consent calendar. Any council members have any items they wish to remove from today's consent calendar?
1D.
Okay.
And 1G.
I'm sorry?
1E.
Okay, then those items have been removed. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any item contained in the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll return to the city council and close council comment. Screen is clear. We'll entertain a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar. Motion by Member Soria, and a sec.
Council President, I would like to log a no vote on item 1F, please.
Okay.
And I, I am also a no vote on 1F.
Yes, me too, please. Okay. Okay, we have a, do we have a motion, a second? You made a motion, didn't you? We already did, we have a motion, and we have a second. Okay, the screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the consent calendar? Okay, seeing that, the motion passes unanimously. Move now to the first removed item, which is item 1D. This is Personnel Services.
Had a couple of questions on that, on that item, so I know a couple of years ago, we had AB 1522 come down that kind of gave, you know, a real definition of what that, what it looked like. Are we, are we as a city using the expanded definition of family, or is that something internal that we determined when we're negotiating?
The changes before you do not have that expanded definition. What they include is the definition that used to be under Labor Code 233, which was parent, spouse, child, and registered domestic partner. The newer expanded version also includes grandparents, grandchildren, and siblings, but the item before you does not include those groups.
Okay, so, so when, when can we expect the ones that do include the expanded version?
If council wants to change it to do that, we can do that right. We could make that change here.
And so, what I'm trying to get a little bit of clarity on, so I know with AB 1522, does it give municipalities parameters, or is it something that's mandated?
It's mandated for the, for six months' worth of earnings, which for most of our employees who earn sick leave is 48 hours.
Okay, so, and what I'm hearing is we're, we're in compliance right now with, what, 1522?
With both 1522 and the changed definition for Labor Code 233, correct, we are in compliance.
And so, for example, an employee that has to take care of a sick grandparent right now, that would be covered under what we have established right now?
It would depend on the timing. If they have taken less than 48 hours, then yes, they would be able to take care of a grandparent. If it is more, if an employee has already taken 48 hours under Labor Code 233, then no, as of right now, they could only use that sick leave for themselves or in a very, under very limited circumstances for another family member.
So, what other family members would fall under that guideline?
The guideline currently that has a limited amount of sick leave for family members is, if I remember correctly, it is for parents, grandparents, siblings, and possibly in-laws. But that, again, is for someone who's hospitalized or is seriously ill and gets special dispensation from a department director. That's under the current FMC provisions.
So, just to be clear, the expanded definition is not something that we're currently doing? Are we looking at incorporating that, or is that just something that you'll work through individually with our bargaining units?
What the expand, the new expanded language that is before you right now is the older definition of Labor Code 233, which seem to have the most interest for our employees, and it includes parent, spouse, children, and registered domestic partner. It does not include grandparents, grandchildren, or siblings. If council wishes to expand that definition to include those as well, we can certainly go in that direction.
Yeah.
What is, what is the drawback in not allowing this?
There is no real drawback. There may even be some advantages. The only thing is that there will be more people that someone can take their sick leave for. It might be used more quickly. We're not expanding the amount of sick leave that is available to people.
I think that, I don't know, for me, it seems like it would be reasonable to expand if it's not going to impact in terms of additional hours and so forth. I see it reasonable. It's something that the state, you know, allows per the existing state law, so I would be open to using that expanded definition.
Would it be, would it be helpful for, for us to do that with regards to employees accruing a lot of sick leave over time? Or is that, do we have, do we have it limited per year?
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to understand the question.
Would it be beneficial to the city to have employees, more family members eligible so that they can take that, that sick leave? Because I understand they have to take that before they take other time, right? Personal time off.
If they're going to use sick leave correct, there's no particular advantage or disadvantage to the city, except to the extent that people might be taking more time off than they do currently.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to hear what some of my colleagues have to say, because this is, it's a little bit, and, and, you know, this came about as conversations I've had with some folks about AB 1522 and what that means for their cities and all that. Is this a time-sensitive item? Do you need to do this now? Can we continue it?
It could be continued. The only issue will be when employees will be able to take advantage of the expanded definition. Right now, because of the process that takes place for, for ordinance change, the, if we were, if you were to approve it today, the second reading would be on the 9th, and it would be effective on December 9th. If we delay it, that's not a problem, but because you have no council meetings for the last two weeks in December, it probably wouldn't be in effect until sometime in January.
I'd just like a little bit more time, but, I mean, what's the pleasure of the council?
I agree. I would actually like more time maybe to really look into the issue a little bit more.
I'll make the motion to postpone it. I'd like to meet with you two and just kind of go over administration, what that, what that means.
Just remove it, right? Or do you, is there action we have to take?
At this point, we would take a motion and at least a consensus to postpone it.
I think there's consensus. Thank you. Next item is item 1E. This is City Manager.
Laura Gloria, Business Manager, City Manager's Office. The item is a first amended amendment to the amended and restated disposition and development agreement between Cesar Chavez Foundation and the city of Fresno. The item just provides some clarification in regards to the transportation-related amenities and sustainable transportation infrastructure, which the project is building and paying for, and then the city will take over as public improvements and maintain in perpetuity, just like any other project. So, the clarification is just to meet an agreement or meet a item on the project's grant funding, and we are here if you have any questions.
Yeah, just a quick question. So, the Cesar Chavez Foundation, that's a development group out of LA?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. And so, they're, they've been awarded the 15.6 million, is that correct?
They've been awarded funding through the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities. A portion of that is for a loan for the actual housing project, and then there are some grants for the other improvements that I discussed.
Okay. And that, when that money's awarded, is that awarded to them, or is it held, it's awarded to them, and they, how's the oversight done with, with those funds?
That is through the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Community Program, so through HCD, through a state agency. So, the city, the reason that the city is in these, this agreement is because we agreed to donate the land as, to help the project be a bit more successful in their application, but the entire project is in the charge of the Cesar Chavez Foundation through the state agency.
Okay. Just wanted to know, do you want to make a motion?
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Screen is clear. Is there any opposition to this item? Item passes unanimously. Thank you, staff. Thank you, council. Item 1G, no. This is approved, the First Amendment.
1G.
1G. Did you remove that?
Yeah, I just had one comment. I wanted to see if we could make some time to meet. I know that this MOU would impact a large portion of my district just because of the way that we've annexed and kind of developed west of the 99, so if we could just set up some time in the next week to see how that's going with the county.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll second. We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to this item? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, staff and council. Scheduled hearings start at 10:00, so let's do item 3A. Approve a memorandum of understanding regarding Department of Public Utilities.
Thank you, Council President, City Council, Tommy Escue, Department of Public Utilities. For this agenda item, staff is requesting council approve a memorandum of understanding regarding coordination, cooperation, and cost sharing on pre-construction activities related to the Temperance Flat Reservoir for a total of $500,000 to be expended during fiscal years 2018, 2019, and 2020. We had, staff had come to you August 31st with a workshop, talking about the various water supply investment opportunities that were available to the city. We talked about two of them at that time, identified a couple others, but that was Temperance Flat Reservoir and the Twin Tunnels Project out of the, out of the Delta. We'd also talked about Big Dry Creek as a project and toilet-to-tap water out of our wastewater plants as, as other projects. In that presentation, we identified that the next step for the Temperance Flat Reservoir project would be to enter into an agreement with agencies on the east side of the valley and the west side of the valley to look at more detail on how we would make Temperance Flat work for the city of Fresno and all the various investors, and this is the mechanism by which the, all the parties will work together. Our first allocation will be about $100,000 for this fiscal year. We anticipate that the model will be pretty sophisticated for the city because we have, we will model both our groundwater system, the use of our groundwater system, Pine Flat Reservoir, and Millerton Lake, and how we would balance all of those water supply options to meet our water demands out to about 2050. So, with that, we would request approval to get started with these agencies and look at how to make Temperance Flat work for the citizens of Fresno.
Okay, let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? Seeing none, return to council. Member Brandow?
Tommy, I do have a quick question. So, if I'm reading this correctly, this is a commitment of half a million dollars in the city of Fresno, and where's the money come from within the city?
Oh, I'm sorry, this will come out of the, the Water Division in our appropriations that we make for Millerton Lake.
Okay. And the MOU, who, what other agencies are involved?
So, right now, the, all of the agencies are going through the process we're going through right now. So, the other agencies that are involved are Friant Water Division Contractors, so that's going to be the Arvin Edisons, Kern-Tillery, the 31 Contractors on this side of the valley, and on the west side of the valley, it'll be the Exchange Contractors, San Luis Delta and DOTA Water Authority, and a few other agencies on the west side that'll also look to derive benefits from the construction and operation of a new reservoir.
So, the half a million dollars, is that to do the modeling on behalf of the city of Fresno, or is it money that we put into a pot with the other agencies?
Good question. So, the, the way the MOU is written, it's a $2 million commitment for everybody to put in, so, and they're selling MS seats, so we buy a seat. It's $100,000 a seat, two to three years, so that's $300,000. We've, what we're requesting is that we get in, we appropriate an additional $200,000 because we know our system is going to require additional modeling effort above and beyond what is required by the rest of the contractors who are going to be looking at this project. So, the first allocation of money is to build the structure of the model, get all the inputs into it, which is common for everybody. And then, once we have that, the base model constructed, then we will go ahead and talk with the consultant and say, all right, these are the very specific things we would like you to model, specific to the city of Fresno. So, that'll be a cost incurred by us, so that'll be money we spend on behalf specifically for our residents.
Okay, and that makes sense. So, we're not the only member of the agency that's putting money into a pot and...
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. Then I have a motion to approve.
Thank you.
There was a motion, and we have a second. Member Chavez.
Tommy, thank you for speaking with me about this item. I know we chatted about this, and I want to make sure that, that, that we know and that the public knows, because I think this is a huge project for not just the city of Fresno, but for the region. And, you know, I'll tell you that in my district, I have a ton of food processing plants that depend on ag, that depend on water, but I want to make sure that we're, we're very clear. So, I know that we submitted a proposal, or the authority submitted a proposal to acquire some resources for Temperance Flat through the state. What happens next year if we do not get that allocation to, to this plan for the city of Fresno?
So, as we, as we presented to you at the workshop on August 31st, there are two, there are two funding scenarios. One funding scenario is we get a billion dollars from the state. The other funding scenario is that we don't get the billion dollars from the state, and we would proceed forward without it. There are some potential advantages of pursuing the project without state funding, because if you take the state funding, then you take the strings associated with the state funding, which is an allocation of water to ecosystem enhancements and public benefits, which are things we support, but you can dial those back a little bit if it's your own money that you're spending as opposed to the government, the state government money. So, we are, have always anticipated that this project would be something we would pursue with or without the state funding. The state funding would be something that would be beneficial to us to help pay for those ecosystem enhancements and public benefits, but it is not a showstopper if we don't get the money, and there's a group of us that are committed to continue forward evaluating it.
And just contemplating, you know, a couple of scenarios here. So, in, in the scenario that we don't get state funding, we will pursue this project, be a partner with the, with the collaboration that's going after other, other pots of money, right? Federal government, federal funding too, and not just that. So, that, that could potentially put the city of Fresno in a strong position to where if we are a partner in that construction, then we would be allocated a certain amount of water from that project, could potentially put us in a position where we could essentially sell water to other jurisdictions in the future? I mean, was that correct?
That's, that's correct. And so, what, the, the primary benefit we're looking at with Temperance Flat isn't so much on the new yield, because it's, it's a limited amount of new yield. It's the ability to store water like on a year like this. It's just, the water went down the river out through the ocean, and we had nowhere to put it. So, this would allow us to carry over water for those dry years. There is an expectation that if we have water available and we have storage available, that we would be able to make water available through a sale and purchase agreement to other agencies that might be in need at that time, and if we've got a surplus. Again, we, we have the very distinct advantage of having Fresno Irrigation District as a partner. We have 120,000 acre feet behind Pine Flat. That puts us in a strong position to make those types of deals. to make those types of deals available.
Absolutely, no, and, and, I mean, it could be ag, it could be the development, it could be a number of projects in the future, and I know that we'll have that robust conversation a little bit later. What's that saying, that whiskeys for drinking and waters for fighting over?
Exactly.
So that, that's part and parcel of what, what that happens, right? So I'm, my questions are done, ready to vote unless anybody else has any other questions.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and the screen is? No. Is there any opposition to this item? I went out to the public, correct? Yeah, all right, no opposition, item passes unanimously. Thank you, Tommy. Okay, let's move now to item three B. This is approve the annual index. This is also Mr. Schuber, take it away.
Good morning, Council, Jerry Schuber, Department of Public Utilities. The item before you is the approval of the annual index-based rate adjustment for the commercial solid waste franchises. These are the two solid waste franchises we have in North and South Fresno, Allied Way Services and Mid Valley Disposal. This is an annual approval, and we've done our due diligence on the, the reports sent to us, and staff believes that they are reasonable and would seek your approval.
Thank you. Let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, return to City Council. If you wish to speak, just please begin speaking, or raise your hand or something.
Heidi.
Go ahead.
Steve, you want to go first?
Yeah, that was a real short presentation. I, I personally would like to ask for continuation of this item and take a meeting with Mr. Schuber and some of the other folks involved in this.
I'll, if you loop me in, I'll go to the meeting too.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a couple of questions before we do that?
You absolutely can.
So the, the question I have is, what, what's the rate increase based on?
It's based on operating fees, it's based on their fuel and their labor.
Okay, and how much would the rate increase be per customer? I see, I see some charts in there, I was looking at it. I see you have it for the organic rate, recycling rate, solid waste rate?
There are three different services that the private hauler provides underneath the CSW franchise. One is the, obviously the solid waste rate, then there's the recycling rate and the, and the organics. For, just for instance, the solid waste rate for a one cubic yard container would have been an increase of 28 cents for Mid Valley, or I'm sorry, for Allied, and for Mid Valley, it would have been 31 cents. So the rate would have gone from, sorry, the text on this is really small, it would have gone from 20.49, $20.49 a service, so that's once a week service, to 20.76, $20.76.
Okay. And the rate increase has increased every year for the last six or seven years?
There has been a rate increase for all but two and a half years where we had actually a freeze on the rate based on their cost base. This is the index-based service that is done off of a CPI. The cost-based index actually was frozen at that time because the rate and the, the model that we got actually, once the consultant came back, said that the, the rate was, was a little more than what it should be, so we just settled and, and froze the rate.
What, what year was that, where it was frozen?
I want to say it was 2013, 2014.
Okay, so it's not raised every year?
No, it's not raised every year, and if there's a, if there's cause for the CPI to drop, then the rate doesn't adjust.
Okay, and that's all part of the contract that we have that we look at those?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Got a quick question, Jerry. So with, with this formula that, that's being requested, has it, has it taken into account the new fuel costs that will be have?
It did not. This was, this was given to us October 1st. The rate model is in accordance with what, what the costs were prior to October 1st, because they have to use last year's modeling. So we have some additional costs that I'm sure are going to be relevant to what happens next year's rates with the increases. One of them will be, we are going to see obviously fuel charge increase that we do not see right now, and then we will also see increases to minimum wage that I'm sure are going to come back.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we're.
This is all good news for the economy, Member Chavez.
I don't know about that.
Tax increases, minimum wage increases, California, watch out. Reach for the stars, guys. It's going to be great. We can think of a way to tax more too, make the economy even better. Is, is everyone finished speaking? Okay.
Council President, I think, Member Brandow, did you continue this item?
Yeah, we just asked for more.
Do we have a, a date when we wanted to bring this back, or was it an opening?
November, November 9th.
It's coming back November 9th, then?
The, the item will actually, if we can get to it before the end of November would be good, because December, they have to notify their rate payers that there will be an increase in January.
No, I just wanted to make sure what date it was coming back.
Okay. Thank you. All right. It's been removed. We have a 10 o'clock item. The 10 o'clock item was removed? It's going to be a short meeting, folks. All right. Let's do, uh... No, you may not. Okay.
Counsel, if I could jump in?
Please, attorney.
The only remaining item on the agenda, other than unscheduled communication, is the 10:15 Ms. Korea's item, but she could be heard under unscheduled communication, if you wanted to go ahead and hear her then.
No. Because then she might speak twice. So, let's, um... Okay, Lynn, let's call you up right now for unscheduled communication. You have three minutes. Please give us your name and address for the... And then you'll have, I know, and then you'll have three minutes.
Mary Esther Korea, I'm a registered voter. I was born and raised here in California, I've been here eight months. I've been charged $14,000 when all I do is come and fix it because of the scamming tenant and, and home, 45,000 home people on this, this area. Okay, let me see, George, I, I have my asthma's bad, I'm still being fined $4,000, $14,000. I live on a income, a fixed income, no money coming in for rent, so I'm paying $20 a month until I get this paid. Okay, George, this is my assistant, George, who's been my care, care, property caretaker and helps, anyways, go ahead, George.
George Torres, talking on behalf of Ms. Korea, she has asthma. She just wants to address y'all that she don't have, she's not a slum landlord. I'm her handyman, and I can tell you firsthand that she pays, and she pays dearly. With John Athlete's witch hunt tactics has cost her a lot, a lot of fines, a lot of headache and a lot of problems, problems so that even results to a medical, going to the doctor. Not all landlords are slum landlords, okay? You guys are raising taxes on water and gas and electric, guess, guess who's stuck paying the, the bill? Taxpayers. You know? Taxpayers. So on that, Ms. Korea and myself, I thank you for your time. Mr. Olivier, I appreciate it, and...
Well, well done, George.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on any item not contained on today's agenda? Okay, then that ends unscheduled communication, and so Mrs. Korea indicated that she would, that would be adequate and forfeit the 10:15 scheduled appearance. Thank you, and thank you all.